Thank you. Okay, there we go.
All right. So we'll start our regular meeting of Board of Trustees. Any public comment? Well, I'm hoping public comment. We we had a pop up at the farmers market on Saturday, which was a raging success. Is that the word? It was annoying to do. It was the best pop up for the farmers market we've ever had.
That's great.
And so we had a wonderful spot. Steve Riddler has been real, who's manager of the market, has been very good to us. So we're coming back on Saturday. And if we won't have the same spot, we were able to leave what books we had and we'll we'll fill them in for this Saturday. But it was it was really, it was really super. And the other is, I don't know if it's here, but we are having, the friends are sponsoring a meet and greet at on March 5th at Lansingburg to have friends and supporters and volunteers meet each other, because they mostly don't know each other, and to celebrate the redesign of the Lansingburg main area. And you know, the staff is saying that already it's made a huge difference, you know. It just looks. So I, you know, I feel it was, the Carolyn started this, you know. And then, no, it was your, you know, I we always liked Lansingburg, and I know you played a really big role in what it looked like, you know, we're talking about the main area. And but the difficulty was that, and this was compounded when the front door was broken, that the entrance then was from Fourth Street and people actually walked through the children's area to get into the main area. So both the branch and the young people's area here asked us for support for carpeting. So we we only provided support for carpeting. And it, you know, it was the vision of the staff at Lansingburg who thought about a whole reconfiguration so that it's a dedicated children's young people area. They've spread out the computer station so that people have more privacy when they're using the computer station. So it's it's really terrific. So you are all invited to this meet and greet. Some of you will have gotten invitations because your card carrying friends means you pay your dues. Yeah, you got it. No, you didn't get it.
I got mine.
Yeah. So there's always some kind of, you know, glitch in whether things have been recorded or not. Anyway, we we will be we sent out emails, we are going to be sending letters to all those folks who are not going back a long time, but do not have email. We'll send out invitations to them. Volunteers, there are volunteers who are not dues payers, like many of the folks that work in the book sale. So so we're very excited to be able to do this and hopefully bring people together. Any questions about that?
What time did you say?
Four to six on Sunday, March 5.
Do you want our SVPs?
I haven't answered ours. March 5, four to six, please come. Also, anybody who comes.
It's a dollar.
It will be a buck that you could trade in for a free book from the book seller. The book seller will be open that afternoon. You come in, you get this buck. You get essentially get a free book of your choice from the book seller.
Will the buck need to be used that day, or can it be used in the future? Someone's gonna ask that question, so I figure might as well be made.
Oh, I gotta say, no, you can't ever use it again, and you can't go home and they kind of you know, you can't duplicate it.
All right, whatever you think I wanted. I mean, you need more stock.
I just ordered, I just donated some stuff, so there'll be no stock. So any questions about that? No, great idea. We're excited to be able to move in, and so it's coming up.
Anything else? Okay, any other public comment? Right, hearing none.
Yes, Lori and I, I don't know if Lori has anything. Nope, she says nope.
Even here, I can't.
Chair's report, please. So the finance committee met and we make a motion to pay the bills an amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Wait, want to second that?
All those in favor?
So we'll pay the bills.
Deviate a little bit, go back to Fred. Fred, the email that I got, the Sunday, March 5th, from P4.
It is from P4. Did I say 40? I misspoke.
Okay, I'll go back.
Thank you.
I just changed that.
I did too.
Oh.
Oh, no, glad you asked that question. I was about to change my calendar too. That would have been very late.
I'm sorry.
No, it's out here. Good question. Um, next consent agenda. We have minutes. Um, there was no building committee report. Uh, no admin. There is a combined upper Hudson and President's report. They're both in there, but all on sheet. Because they were in tandem, so I put them together this month. Um, do we have a motion to accept, please? And and we have a second. Thank you. All in favor?
I didn't do the minute last time, that's why.
Which is also why I did not do the motion. Okay, regular agenda. Um. You want to talk about the audit? Oh. Please?
The audit, the 2022 audit. I am recommending that we retain the services of Bonadillo again for the third year. And we have an agreement ready to be signed. Unless anybody has other ideas. We need to approve that formally.
Bonadillo, I I never spell it right. B-O-N-A-D-I-O?
Yeah.
Sure, okay.
Um, yeah, we need a formal resolution and pay us on that.
So you're going to be making motion? As it's treasure?
Yes.
I make a motion that we hire Bonadillo to do our 2022 audit.
Okay.
Just a second.
Do we have any discussion? No, all in favor? What would this be, the last year you recommend? Is it three years that we usually do somebody and then change by?
We change that in financial policy.
Okay. And since we're on roll, do you want to go on with your director's report?
I could, yes. So the thing thing that I've been working on is the RFP for the H5 system that we're contemplating. And I listed in my directors report the nine companies that I tend this directly to. Many of them I have worked with before. A couple of them I'm not familiar with, but they look like they might be interested in the preservation aspect of the whole project. As well as, of course, the engineering part. I have been discussing the project with the State Department who's handling the DRI grant. Then a couple of suggestions, they wanted to make it clear that it's a two-part project. And actually, we're gonna have to proceed that way. Because both the DRI granted us, and now I understand that the grant is going to be a reimbursement type situation.
Have they changed that then?
Apparently, and the contract reads like a reimbursement situation. So I guess we should be prepared for that. The State Department was quite concerned that we are going to be able to separate this in our application for repayments for the expenses as they go along. And I I think that's gonna be possible. I mean, we've had to do that before on projects. We just have to make sure the contractors understand how that works. And so I spelled it out in quite a lot of detail in the RFP. And that was the only thing that the State Department did have as a question in terms of because I did get a copy of the RFP that I sent to them. So I'm hopeful, I think when you read it over, it's a relatively complicated project. It involves a lot of dark work, it involves heating as well as air conditioning and ventilation in a building that's 125 years old. So not everybody, I think, is gonna jump on this, but I'm hopeful that we get maybe even four or five responses of companies I want. And this is basically the the design stage. We had some questions in terms of hazardous materials. And that could be split. I have talked to Alpine and they could also handle the design stage for hazardous materials. And that's gonna be a part of this whole project, or at least a significant part of it. Because there's hazardous material everywhere. Luckily, they have a file on us and where most of the hazardous material is. Any question on that? Or?
I was curious ordinarily if those are parties that I see that they might be bidding on it. So how did that work?
They have expressed the idea that they're not going. It's too big a project. However, they will be submitting, they'll submit a bid or monitor. So we'll take a look at that. That may be something we need to separate out and follow through with. Okay. That went out on the 8th, by the way. And it's a fairly short response time we're looking for here. We need to have proposals by the end of March. In terms of some current construction.
I did have another question.
Okay.
So it says that the total project is something like one million two hundred.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But we have said it would be one million three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
With the twenty-five thousand match.
Yeah.
So how come twenty-five thousand isn't?
Oh, and the RFP. Well, that's, I guess, because I was just
It says complete project, though. Twenty-five thousand under.
Okay, and current projects, we are trying to finish up that floor downstairs in the staff kitchen. We have decided not to disrupt those steam pipes considering the fact of age. And we've also decided bypassing that is not a good bet at this point. So we've come up with a plan that basically it's going to involve draining, it already involves draining the steam from those pipes down into the ground. And so so far it works fine. So they're gonna finish that up this week. And then on the northwest parapet wall, we're gonna have to bring in some other people to take a look at that. Preservationist and Ryan Bates, engineering firm, who originally did the description for the project. So we want to get a real clear idea of the scope of work on that project. So we're working on that. And that should be done very soon. Most of my time is, last week or so, has been spent on the annual report. The thing opened only a couple of weeks ago, and it's due Friday. So we didn't have a heck of a lot of time. And it gets shorter every year. But but one thing about it, it was kind of a noticing that our circulation's been up forty-five percent this year over over last year. Last year was a disaster. So we're back in the right direction. Our statistics are up and our programming and people coming in, all of that is is up, so. That's a good sign.
Don't we usually approve the annual report? Doesn't the board usually approve the annual report?
Not anymore. It didn't work very well because of board meetings didn't respond well with what it was due. So they sort of dropped that at this point. And that's it?
So I don't know if people remember, but there was a lot of hesitancy in terms of applying for the DRI and the the ARPA. And the idea was that we could apply and then just not accept it. It seems to me that the board should really vote to accept them. Because for the the president to be signing things, it needs to be done with the approval of the board. So there may be something we want to do tonight.
I probably do.
We did. Why did we do that? When we made the application, we were all very concerned. We were the idea came up, but once you we approved that application, it was with the understanding that we were in it.
No, that wasn't my my understanding was that people were reluctant to commit to it. And only did approve applying with the idea that they could be refused.
I don't believe that was at all part of the resolution. It certainly came up as a discussion point. But I do not believe that that was part of the resolution.
Do you remember what meeting that was? I can go back.
Excellent question. No, I personally don't. Forgot my phone, so I can't look up anything really.
I'll sneak around. Continue.
April May?
You keep talking about other things.
Okay, any other questions? We can go back to that. But, okay, um. Well, it's not in the agenda. One of the things in the packet, which implied it would be on the agenda, is discussion of the long-range plan. I did send it out. It was in the packet. It's a refreshed revised. What could you pass that to? Fred, please.
I'm sorry?
To Fred, please. It's in the packet before the director's report, so you have to go back up. Yep.
And the email you sent out highlighting that it was part of the materials. You said we had worked on it. I thought, who had worked on it?
The board has passports. We talked about it. It's been up in our, it's been discussed in our board meetings. Okay, well, it's a, it's a week. So you were, when you were saying we, you were referring to the board. Yes, this is what we, yes, we're doing that. Yes. Yes. I wasn't clear. Anyways, so it is, like I said, in the packet. It's here. I don't know if people have had a chance to review it, look at it.
I want to say that I have not.
Okay.
I am not prepared to continue with that proposal based on the fact that I'm extremely since we put it in there.
I know. I don't expect this to be done, completed, worked on today. But I think it'd be really a good idea if we can if there's anyone who had any reactions on, had a chance to compare, contrast.
I made one pass through it.
Okay.
It seemed to me to be very broad and yet at the same time very specific. And I I, you know, probably don't have a good idea of what a long-range plan should should be. But I I would want to take more, to develop more of a standard to look at it in that way. What is a long-range plan? And see, that was just my my reaction.
My thought is that some things we've already done or are in the process of doing. Something that did strike is
It just tricked?
Something did strike me was
Okay.
language without specificity. Conduct periodic community surveys. What period? Once every five years, once every three years?
And the measurability, that things didn't seem measurable as to whether they how do we know whether they're achieved or not?
Okay. So many long-range plans are a little broader. And then you get into your more specific strategies and goals afterwards. But in keeping with some of the structure of the 2011 and the 2019 work, I kind of mixed, you know, and actually pulling that together and putting it in one document. So it is a bit, and so some areas are a little bit broader, you're correct. But that's when you start layering some more things. So if people want to see that in a long-range plan, the kind of specificity, then keep that in mind and start thinking about what you want as or you suggest. As specifically, that's insane. Instead of just not talking about community surveys that needed to be in there. But it was worded quite differently in the 2011. It didn't quite work as well for, you know, a refresh. So it changed to periodic. I think in the 2019, it might have been a little bit more specific, but again, it was, it's making sure that it is actually doable. And who is gonna do it? I mean, you can get down to that kind of specificity. Who's gonna do it? Who's gonna write it? How is it going to be distributed? How how is it gonna be analyzed? You know, you can break all those pieces down to whether or not it's written in a long-range plan or we're looking at it as strategy. That's a good, I mean, it's a good question and something we can talk about.
So you see it as including goals?
I think that's the next step.
Okay, so you don't see it as including goals?
It doesn't always have to include the goals, but this is what we're going to do. This is the guide. And then you get your specifics, then you go more into your goals. Because that's your strategy. We want to see three community surveys in a year. We want this kind of community survey. And I'm just using that as one example. And then all the other pieces that make it happen. And make it actually happen with the resources that we actually have. So does anybody else have any comments or thoughts or?
I have to be honest, I haven't had the time to review or look at it. Yes, I would like to sometimes, but if that's okay.
Of course. Again, this was just to start the conversation, to put it in.
How do you restart the conversation?
Because otherwise, we're gonna just keep doing, it never happened. Exactly. So have to start like you, I think even you would say have to start something. So it's in there. And we started pieces of it. We've worked on mission statement. This is a way of going back and putting all that together. And that's something that we will have a full robust document.
So does it start that medium term goal five years? Is that?
Yeah. That's where I did my copy and paste. You know, I mean, I took that from the 2011. We can even remove that. But usually it's I'm sorry. I always, I don't always think about the, I try and work, do better about titling some of the things in that's put in the Dropbox, but it doesn't always work as well.
So what period do we see a long-term?
Most, most plans like this are considered five-year plans. However, the way I was taught back at PDP is you you start with your five-year plan. And every year you take out your five-year plan and you revise, you look at it. You work out to another five-year plan, but you've also finished your what you've done at one year. So it's a living document. And then you go out again.
So we're trying to do something that what the timeframe we're trying to look at here is five years.
Yeah, exactly. We're doing a five-year plan, but whenever it's solidified, a year from that date, you go, what else? What has changed? What's been done? What what else are we seeing that needs to be added? So you read in a way revise the document. And it goes out another five, but it goes out another five years. It's not just a one-year plan. It's a five-year plan that gets looked at every every year. Always, that's how I was trained to. It's not just a one-year plan. It's a five-year plan that gets looked at every, every year. Always. That's how I was trained to. And it was. Any other comments, thoughts, reactions?
So on the long-range plan? No, I have an update when we're ready on Marie's question.
Oh, okay. So let us go back to the next question.
Right, right. Um, in the in the March meeting. M G asked the board for approval to move forward with application, creation and submission. E K G expressed concern about approving something without fully knowing what it will contain. K L proposed that the board should approve of applying for the grant and could vote later on accepting the grant should it be imported. B C G D F and K F concurred. E K G asks if anyone knew a downside to rejecting the grant. K L moved that the board approved the creation and submission of application to the downtown revitalization initiative for a grant to support the possible installing A T fat and related costs.
So the actual resolution was to apply for it?
Yes, we did not, but, and it seems clear that the idea was that then we would vote later on accepting it.
Okay. You see, I'm reading, no, we, we read, everyone had their comments, but we said life isn't, is up to interpretation. But you know, it doesn't hurt to actually take a vote now on accepting it. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything anyway. So, and shall we do one for the ARPA and one for the D R I? All right. Since I already signed this ARPA, I don't think I should make the motion to exempt it.
There is a motion. Let Troy Public Library accept here, great.
Second, second, all in favor?
Wait, so we have the session?
Oh. No, we didn't. You see, I'm just making that terrible assumption. Any discussion?
I, and maybe that's what's discussed and I just missed it, so I apologize in advance, but since they are reimbursable grants, I just wanted to make sure that we had the liquidity and a plan for the liquidity to make that, I'm sure we do. I just want to say it out loud.
Yes.
Okay.
Comment on that?
Okay.
Because I had actually been wondering whether we should ladder our treasury bills when they come to since there is the question about the deficit, what may be happening with that. So that way we may be more likely to have the money available should we need it with the grants.
It's always available. We can cash it in anytime.
So it doesn't matter whether we ladder?
No.
No, the ladder, a ladder in way change, you know, like what your payout is on each one?
Yeah, if it lasts, they wouldn't.
Right. Shorter lives would be.
So.
Oh, no, you can land, you can ladder three months. So you Right. Right. Yes. Like a little, like by three months and then wait three months? Is that what you're saying? Right. Well, initially you probably have to do them at, at, you know, different lengths of time, but after that
Right.
they could all be three years, three months. Anyway, that's just something that occurred to me with, with what's been going on in the news.
I mean, it's going to take it's going to take a couple of years for the contracting stage. Yeah.
So we have the opportunity to.
You can reinvest that.
Right. At some point, you may not even want to be in treasury anymore, you know, things.
Any other? So we had the motion. We had a second.
Do the D R I?
I'm going to do this again. You'd like to redo. So we had the motion. We had the second. Uh, we had the discussion. All in favor? Okay. Now the D R I. So.
Make the motion that Troy Public Library accept the D R I grant has offered.
Yeah, the second. Do we have discussion? Oh, it wasn't. Same question, I'm sure, but any other questions or comments? Okay, then all in favor? Okay. I guess we're sort of on old, new business. And thank you for looking that up too. Um, any other old and new business? Well, actually, you do have a little bit, old business, sorry. A while I had mentioned our programming, um, and increase and, you know, pass some stuff around. And here are some other sheets to look at. And someone had talked about you're just to look at. I, I don't think anyone really they're just some of the stats. If you want to pass it around, some people want to look. We could get more people want, but um, someone had made a comment that the library wasn't doing much programming. Um, so I grabbed a copy of our programming calendars, which is just into February and there's probably more things coming. Uh, these sheets are flying off the table. They've had to do more than one printing as they've been increased. Yeah. Activity. So there's a sheet for Brent, um, for Maine. There's a sheet for Lansingburg. There are some of the stats, just so people know that. Programming is going to be the ambushers. So a lot of it's a lot of fun. Okay, so that's new business. Anything else? Anybody else?
Uh, Kristen, you weren't here earlier.
I apologize.
And uh, the RFP was discussed. Did you want to have any input on that now that you're here?
I apologize for being late, so I don't want to take everyone's time to recash it if anyone has time to update the machine.
I did cover the fact that Alvin can do the design. Excellent.
And I had been curious how, you know, because Kath usually does the RFP for us. And yet they were one of the recipients.
No. Tacked it up to the RFP, to my knowledge, and they.
No, I did, yeah.
Okay. When I asked about it, you responded that you didn't expect that they would pursue it.
That, that's also my understanding.
They weren't going to bid on it. They're not going to propose on it.
For that portion of the work. Maybe other pieces that they might did want, you know, to propose about.
Okay.
We will miss meeting at the end of our meeting, April eighth, March.
What?
April eighth, for the continuation will be done.
We have to notice, but I can, I'll certainly say, we all know that on March eight, three to five, we're having our part two of the conversation with the director on.
Is there any, like, I could, I missed the first half of that. Is there any, like, paper thing that I'm supposed to look at beforehand? I didn't see anything after I filled out my
We did get.
My email that I don't see it.
Okay.
But that's a possibility.
That is a possibility. I
I don't have any of them. And I wasn't here.
I don't remember how we handed it out, to be honest.
Well, didn't you do that?
We have a paper copy.
Yeah.
No, there is, is an electronic bit.
Can you get it to?
Can you email it to me? Thank you.
And if there's any questions about the discussion, I'd be happy to. From memory. Nothing was written there. Um, okay. Any other, any feedback? Okay. Um. Public comments? Do we have any public comments? From anyone here or?
Um, Lori, do you have anything?
Or Virginia?
Um, oh yeah, Virginia's here also.
I see two other things, I think, but I can't tell what it, can't read it carefully.
It's me.
Um, Lori Dreher says, no, thank you. And Virginia, I'm not sure.
All right. Let's take that. No public comment.
Sorry, Virginia does not have anything.
I do.
Oh, you do.
Yeah, I dragged my hand. Um, I was going to participate on Zoom tonight. You guys didn't have a Zoom meeting up on the Landmark Board website.
Oh, my goodness. That was my bad. I normally have that up, but we had an emergency and that totally slipped my mind.
I understand that. And also I was looking for the agenda and documents, and then it should have been up twenty-four hours ahead of time. I know I mentioned it before.
Yeah, the agenda is on there.
I did not see the agenda on there.
It was on the website.
I had it sent to me. But that does have to be up twenty-four hours. If you're ready to take a vote on something like an ARPA grant, people in the public might have a comment on that. You guys are a taxpayer-funded organization.
Yeah, again, I apologize for not having the Zoom link up. We had an issue in the office and that slipped my mind.
Thank you. That was it.
Any other public comment? We're going, okay. Um. Date and time of our next meeting, March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, five o'clock at the finance, five-thirty for the regular meeting. Anything else?
So we, I'm just, so when we come, we should be prepared to discuss this.
Yes. Well, I know this isn't going to be a one-month
Question.
But it probably lots of discussions. Anything else?
I have a question. Did you discuss the memory of understanding between the friends and the library?
You and I need to talk. Yes or no? We have. If there is, um, there is a version of it. Um, I am actually meeting with someone tomorrow to discuss MOUs from the library perspective. Um, and I had promised Paul I would take full responsibility of that. Because I understand he promised you tonight. Yes, well.
Thank you.
Well, uh, there has been some information that I've received. There seems to be a difference of opinion on controllers' opinions. So I need, I, I'm trying to get some more research on it before.
Whether or not the, um, the library could do fundraising, is that?
That's part of it. Um, and I know there's other, there's more to that than that as the rationale, but if we're going to go forward, I want to be clear under what rationale we're doing it. Um, and making sure that, as Paul said, we know what we don't know. So tomorrow I can have a meeting with someone who's been through it on a larger scale than we're doing here.
So what's the plan in terms of, uh, getting back to us?
Well, next step is, after this conversation, is to go back to the document, do whatever revisions, additions, um. It's going to have to go at some point, share it with the friends. And then the board will, both, I'm sure our boards need to approve it.
So does that mean, um, do you have to convene as a board in order to approve it? I'm trying to figure out what the timeline is. That, that's my concern.
Yes, we, in order to make any kind of decision, it has to be a public publicly announced in the meeting.
So whatever happens in the interim then comes back
Yes.
to the board for the March meeting.
Yes. I mean, most likely everyone will have seen it beforehand and have some more comment here. And I'm sure the friends will be able to have seen it beforehand and, and get a chance to see it and make whatever comments and revisions they you all would like to make. But tomorrow's that first step. It was the first time I was able to get a hold of my contact to do this.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I recognize that it's, it's new to, uh, the trustees and to the friends and but I, I was just wanting to understand what the process was going to be. And, and you may know that process is incredibly important to me. So I want to make sure we're doing it as close to the right way as possible. So unfortunately didn't make the agenda tonight, but with the timeline of knowing that it was coming and going through it and getting the actual, um, draft. And then arranging to me. Things happen to say happen. But thank you.
Okay, when that, yes.
Would there be a time for informal conversation about the, uh, medium-term goals that have been shared out as a draft?
When you say?
No, no, I understand that it's not on the agenda for seeing to go with is in detail.
That was a, a, an errant typing. Let's put it that way. It was supposed to be on there. That's why it was in the packet. So we did discuss it to some extent. I can't remember if that's when you came in or not.
Before. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is there an opportunity to discuss that informally?
Absolutely. Sure. We're not making any decisions, so we can certainly talk. And I, I asked for any comments, reactions. Um, it was just a, a draft. First pass, start the conversation. Um, we got some comments that whether or not broader specific.
We can do, I thank you.
You're welcome. Shall I say last call for anything else?
I was just looking on the website. The agenda is there. It may be that it's separate from the the
We saw, I don't know when it was supposed to be. It wasn't there when I did, yeah. Or I didn't see it. At least it was up there, presumably as well.
I might have missed it.
Yeah.
Uh, if I were looking because it's not where talk, references today's meeting. So I thought perhaps that was part of the confusion.
Okay. One more last call. Anything else?
Considering it's Valentine's Day.
Yeah, I know. Well, we are trying to get there. That's what I would love. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.